Turning body of the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Hawthorne is called to order at 6:03 PM. Madam Secretary?
Roll call, Agency Member Manning, Agency Member Montero.
Present.
Agency Member Patterson, Agency Member Reyes English.
Here.
Chairman Vargas.
Here. Madam Secretary, guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the special meeting agenda.
Anybody wishing to address the city council? If not, I declare oral communication close ordered. Madam Secretary, item number one?
Item one, approving an amended recognized obligation payment schedule ROPS for the six-month fiscal year fiscal period from January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025, ROP 24-25B, and taking certain related actions.
I move. Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects chairman and agency members voting yes.
Is there anything further from agency members or staff? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 6:04 PM. So we're gonna give cable about a couple minutes until...
You don't need to today, you could move straight forward to the...
Pretty good?
Yes.
Okay, well then that's... Are we on the air right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we're good. The September 10th, 2024 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. Pastor Greg, which can you please do the invocation for us today? And we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Bobo, could you help us out?
Do it by your heads. Holy Father, thank you so much for this day, we're grateful for everybody here, thank you for our lives, thank you for family and friends and purpose and meaning and all those things that go into being human, we're really grateful to be alive, we're grateful for living in our city, and for just everything, from the sunshine to the beach to puppies, I mean everything kind of comes from you, and we're like, we're really thankful for that, so thank you. I do pray for the city council, Father, and as a lot of churches do every week, we do pray for their, give them wisdom and guidance to help them to determine the best determination for our city, pray for the upcoming election because that's a tough deal for everybody involved, and a special blessing in them, Father, it's not easy to do that, and we just want to remember them before you, they're putting their hearts on the line and their view of government, and people have to vote on that, so we just, we pray you bless them during this time and afterwards, when all the ships fall where they may, and thanks for everything, you're a great Father, I pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. For our first presentation, this evening I'd like to call on Devon Kincaid to come up to the podium, Mr. Kincaid, you'll be talking about Republic Services operational updates, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, Devon Kincaid, Republic Services, I'm plenty loud enough, so I'm pretty sure you can probably hear me through the microphone as well, so wanted to come in time, you know, kind of first and foremost introduce myself, but also to give some city updates in regards to some of the things that are going on with Republic Services in the exciting industry of garbage, all right? All right, I got a couple last, I'm on fire already, all right? So, moving into the first kind of updates, we had some recent staffing turnover when it comes to our supervisory team, Mark is no longer with the company, you guys will now have Miguel Ruiz, he's an individual that's been partnering with some of the people on the staff as well, he's been doing a phenomenal job, he's very intensive, you know, all hours a day, he can get kind of get reached, and some of the things we have him doing is reaching out for some of the city concerns, as well as some of the customer concerns, so if we have missed pickups or billing concerns or whatever have you, he's typically your first point of contact that I kind of direct over them, I think it's very, very important that you have a face and a steward in regards to our partnership, and he's that first-line level of defense, you know, outside of your guys' counseling team. Safety improvement, as recently, we went through a little bit of a staffing shortage when it came to June or July, out of our overall cast, we had about 24 individuals go on FMLA within our working force, so when you think about an average working force, about 250 individuals, that's losing about maybe a 12th of our overall team, right? So instead of those individuals and just us waiting for them to come back into the actual working fold, we decided to act right then and there, we opened about 18 active positions, as well as 16 temporary hiring positions, so about 34 people, and we've also had a fair amount of people return, so what does that mean to the city and what does that mean to the citizens? Well, that means more people out there, so that we are making sure every single route is staffed and everything's getting taken care of, and so the needs of the cities are getting met across the board, right? We look at some of the hotspots, city cans, and alleyways, right, Stephanie, I had an opportunity to talk to her a little bit today, she is a young lady that runs said route that goes and kind of patrol these areas, it's been kind of an improvement program that we've been working hand-in-hand with the city, but that driver takes pride in what she does, right, she just, you know, wanted to kind of talk about sending her daughter to college and making sure that we're out there making these cities happy, and that she has a job to actively make sure she comes back to, so she puts a lot of pride into everything she does, it's an active thing that we're continuing to work on, right, hotspots throughout any city kind of organically change, right, with the, you know, migratory paths of the unhoused, or just kind of, you know, housing cleanups or whatever have you, so those change on and weekly, if not daily basis. So, some of the service offerings we really want to talk about on the residential and commercial side, extra pickups, making sure you guys are utilizing your staff as a point of contact, as well as our CRC programs, if you want extra pickups, as well as bulk collection, household battery recycling, mail order Sharps program, as well as online bill pay, right, instead of kind of calling in and sending the carrier pigeon to corporate with a check inside of it, making sure you're setting those online services up, right, in the age of technology where everybody has a phone and a supercomputer now in their pocket, making sure you're setting those systems up, as well as a temporary container rental program, so if you have any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to come and attack the guy at the door, as well as Don Benton Harris, who is here with me today, and we'll get you guys set up and everything taken care of needing going forward. SB 1383, right, what does that mean? I'm pretty sure everybody here has seen a magical green cart show up on their premise in the past year and a half, and then if you look at the actual, or the commercial side, you've been seeing them out there too as well. SB 1383, quite frankly, breaking it down, is an organic retrieval process, right? When you think about what goes in the garbage, some of us are young enough to remember when recycling was a brand-new thing in California about 10, 15 years ago, right? We were all throwing everything in one container, I was about to say, I was in probably middle school, I'm sorry, at that point, um, we were throwing everything into one container, right, but what does that mean for the environment, what does that mean for overall sustainability, and what does that mean for the game plan of what California kind of wants and envisions for us? It means we're not necessarily doing our part to preserve the environment and preserve the world, right? So, recycling became a thing, now outside of that, look at organics, look at when you guys are eating your dinner, unless you guys are going through your whole meal and there's no bones and no leftovers whatsoever, right, which, myself, I'm a human garbage disposal, you're still producing waste, right, but what can we do with that waste? Believe it or not, you can break that waste down, and any gardening folks in here, no, that's actually nutrient-rich, you know, material that can be utilized for growing and sustaining the environment, right? So, with this new program being launched, it's the typical three-card system across the board in regards to the organics retrieval program, right? There's many assets or, you know, things that kind of go into it, one of the biggest things that come out of it is procurement, which that we are really actively looking forward to partnering with cities, I know with you guys, you guys have the mulch giveaway or the compost giveaways consistently or throughout the kind of city program, however, what it comes down to is a certain number has to be given out, right? So I've done this for the last year and a half since SB 1383 has been a thing, not too many people come to the banks and libraries and want a handful of mulch, or a handful of, you know, compost, right? Typically, a lot of the times during the SB 1383 program, we donate said tons or said pounds to farms, right, outlining our communities or outlining into like the kind of valley areas, so going forward, we plan on partnering with the city in regards to that, um, this is kind of like a little bit hand-in-hand with some of the things that we've done in the past couple of years, as well as what is this program looking forward going into the future? Dawn and her team have a full staff of individuals that go out there and they check annual compliance, right, they're going out there lifting lids, they're not the only ones lifting lids around, right, they're going out there and checking and making sure compliance is happening, as well as education, because that's one of the most important things to come out of this, right? I hearken back to some of my days when I was an operation manager and I got to go to schools and explain to kids, right, and see the excitement out of their faces, they know that they're gonna take it home to their families, right, when you look at some of the programs, some of the visions we have laid out in front of us, some of the mailers that are going out to individuals, it's an exciting program and something that's really gonna change the environment later on down the road. Again, talking about sustainability in action, so, we just opened up the first-of-its-kind polymer center out in Vegas, right? What does polymer mean? So, I was hoping and I was praying that somebody here had a water bottle or like a plastic bottle, there we go, right? So if you guys go to a lot of these stores right now, or a lot of these convenience stores, or 7-Eleven, you're gonna look at certain containers, and if there's a certain symbol on there, that means it's came from a stack of material from Republic Services. We just opened up the first-of-its-kind facility, I think we actually had an individual on the dais come out to come visit, right? I'm sorry about the weather, I heard it was 110 when you went out there, appreciate your sacrifice in regards to going out, but it was really cool and eye-opening kind of see what Republic is trying to do when it comes to the thought process of sustainability. Everything that we're drinking and everything we're putting out there, it's still waste that needs to get shredded up, but a lot of that material was lost, right? The polymer center itself captures that material and puts it back into the actual programs where they're selling it back to Coca-Cola and Pepsi and all these other companies, making the process reusable and consistently being, you know, an active member of the community, so it's really, really cool, it is in Vegas, if anybody on the dais would like to go out and visit, please let us and Dawn know, and we can definitely arrange a site visit out there. Next up on the list, so there's been plenty of new innovations to come out to our fleet, just recently, and I know you guys probably hear about it on the news all the time, AI has finally made its way into our trucks, what does that mean? I get to fire all my drivers and our trucks drive themselves, right? No. Our AI systems will start tying into what we call service verification, so as soon as we go up to a customer, it's gonna scan what is inside the garbage, how much garbage is in there, and then as soon as it's dumped, it will send a notification to the customer letting them know the service has been done, exact same time, right? Succeeding the expectations of the customer. The way I like to, you know, envision it, you know, my wife orders 900 things from Amazon, and she wants to know exactly when that package gets to her house, right? Some of the Amazon times will let her know, hey, it's three minutes away, or it's three houses away, so she is looking out the window. Well, same thing with some of our vehicles relatively soon, it's gonna let you know how far we are away, when service was completed, and what was in there, giving out better education to the customers on what to do going forward with the garbage that's inside of there, or trash, or the recycling, or the organics. The second caveat off top of that is electric vehicles. Republic Services is one of the forefronters when it comes to partnering with EV vehicles, some of its first made it into its market, and we are one of the first providers to have these vehicles, so we are very excited, the first vehicles for EV will be getting to our fleet at my yard by the end of this month, so hopefully come out next month, I would like to send an invitation, all right, I'm sorry, invitation to everybody on the dais to come out and take a look at these vehicles, because they are something of the future and it's amazing, right? When you think about our overall process and everything I keep saying is sustainability, 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 these EV trucks are really quiet, and the emissions are cut in half comparatively to what it would be for CNG, now CNG, the emissions were cut in half when it came to having diesel trucks, right? So the active thought of just us getting that much more better when it comes to our purpose and being a sustainable company is getting to the next level, so we are very excited for this, we will be sending out invites, we would love for you guys to come over to our yard over in Gardena to see these trucks in action, or heck, I would love to bring one of these trucks out to one of the shred-it-or-compost events that we are having coming up to kind of do a touch-a-truck event. That is all I got, here is the actual call center, so if you guys have any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to reach out, I will be here for the next half an hour to an hour with myself and Dawn, if you guys have any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to pull me off to the side.
Thank you, sir.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate the follow-up, I know we had some constituents that came and were a little upset, so it's good to see that there was a quick response on your end to address some of their concerns, I've always used the rule of thumb that we're not the lead agency because we have a contract with you guys, so you guys are the lead agency to our constituents, right? So I always direct constituents to work it out with Republic Services, whatever their issues are, however, if there's still a non-consensus, if you will, with regards to what they're asking and how you could provide that or correct that and/or not, then contact, you know, us, right, which would be Department of Public Works. I believe thus far, it's been very helpful with regards to how you guys are managing accounts, how you're addressing some of the concerns and complaints, especially those that are, for instance, missed pickups, say, for instance, credits that should be given back to their accounts that haven't posted yet, things like this, right, so those are the calls that we get, and those are really internal things that should be discussed with you all, because we don't have the billing system, we're not aware of any of their issues on missed pickups, we don't have any of that, so I like the fact that constituents are hearing how we are working collectively to address their concerns, working with you, and that's my whole thing, that there, I'm satisfied as long as the constituents being taken care of, and there's not this redundancy going back and forth, right? Especially when you see them coming in over and over and over again, there's something wrong there, that's how I feel, and/or maybe not. And then, everything that you talked about with regards to your new electric vehicles, your new fleet, everybody's doing it, right? Everybody's doing it, everyone's going into AI with at least a little bit of AI and everything that they're implementing, that is a new tool in a sense, in our new technology, our new world. I want to go back to the tour that I took over in Las Vegas with regards to your polymer center, state-of-the-art, again, state-of-the-art equipment, being able to quickly recycle all the trash that is on the conveyor belts and going through the systems, and being separated on, you know, what type of material it is, right? So all of that, looking at all of that, very impressive, I saw hard-working staff having to stand and do the work, it brought a lot of memories, because I used to work on something not so similar, but having to stand for long periods of time, but all of that, just to say, you know, I want, I want to continue a good relationship with Republic Services, I thank you for what you're doing in helping the city of Hawthorne with our bulky item pickup with regards to hosting our events, right? The events, the cleanups and whatnot, so just want to say thank you for your time and just being here today and coming when we call on you, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Devon, for being here, and thank you, Dawn, that's sitting right behind you, yeah, it is important, you know, to build a stronger relationship with us, right? Because our constituent expects us to deliver a good service, and it's gonna depend on Republic to deliver that service for us, so one of the things that I've been seeing in my complex where I live, people continuing to put trash into those green bins as for recycling, you know, for the food, so what else can we do? Because, you know, we put signs, we had a lot of education workshop through the community about educating people how to recycle the compost, the food, but people are still throwing trash in there, you know, plastic bags, and my mind go crazy, right? So what else can we do to educate our constituent, our residents, not to put trash in those green bins?
Look, I hear you loud and clear, you know, in my household, I get kind of mad when somebody puts a soda pop can in the wrong, you know, kind of receptacle myself, right? What it comes down to is up front and center communication, when it comes down to phones, emails, whatever have you, you can kind of tune those out a lot of the times, when I look at the SB 1383 program, and one of the things that it requires is going to the doors, going to the actual kind of business makers or business decisions, and actually having that conversation kind of front and center, and then them passing that over to their teams, you know, is the most important way to kind of move it. What I would say is that there's things that you guys are seeing firsthand, I would say, everybody in this room across the board, let our team know, right? It's not necessarily being the kind of tattletale police, but it's about being, you know, educational, and I think that's where it comes down to, right? Is it a want or will, or is it just ignorance in the aspect of not knowing, right? We got all the literature under the sun, and then we got the time to go out there and talk to those individuals if need be as well.
Now, is my understanding that in the near future, if people do not comply with that, will be some type of penalty?
So I have to look at what your guys' contract says, it does say that, yeah, so some of our contracts does say that there is a contamination charge.
Correct.
Right, when you think about what contamination is, you kind of think about it just in simplest of terms, let's look at recycling then, right? We know what needs to go in there and what doesn't need to go in there, you know, it's chicken bones or whatever have you, it's obviously gonna kind of flag us being contaminated. The customers will get the individual notification saying that, hey, there was contamination here, Ben, my thought there is, obviously, you know, they go out there and try to fix it, or kind of the remedy charge comes into place.
Okay, so let's go back to the AI question, so is that a possibility that could, that AI can analyze the trash and then send a notification through our, you know, social media or to our phones, okay, you not recycle correctly?
Yeah, so just similar to the kind of polymer center, when you go there, you kind of see these AI systems that are going out there and separating garbage, or you kind of see, when you go to one of our recycling centers, there's these computers, like supercomputers, know what belongs in a receptacle, or knows what belongs in garbage whatsoever, so when these containers are getting dumped, it's checking everything that's going into that mix, if it's recycling and all of a sudden it sees a banana peel, it's gonna flag it, obviously, it's in the wrong, right? To answer your question, yeah, and then that is gonna be sent back over to the individual customer, especially if they have any questions, it's actually gonna be logged onto their account, so they can know, hey, you know, maybe I was doing the wrong thing, or hey, now I know going forward that needs to go into the green bin, or that needs to go into the gray bin, or that needs to go into the blue bin, or whatever have you, making sure everything needs to go where it needs to go, but yeah, it's, you know, just like Councilwoman was saying, it is a tool, and it's gonna be, you know, something that helps educate individual citizens, as well as, you know, notifies the company on what needs to happen.
All right, fantastic, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much for your presentation.
You guys are up.
Our next presentation will be given by our IT Services Manager, Josh Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong, can you please proceed with your presentation on the Information Technology Services President and Future informational update?
All right, good evening, my name is Josh Armstrong, Information Technology Services Manager, want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, who is not here, council members, elected officials, I want to take the opportunity to give a brief update on what the Information Technology Services Department is doing, as well as what we actually do do, so let's get into it. What does the Information Technology Services Department do? Well, we are an ISD, we're an internal services department, we are not public-facing, we do not interface directly with the public, although we do have multiple systems out there that do, i.e. the city's website, we are broken up into basically three different branches, which is the general services side for the city, the public safety services side, and then of course, the backend, which is the data processing, the data center, all the infrastructure that nobody ever sees. We support multiple areas for the network connectivity, domain authentication, the usernames, hardware printing, software hosting, users, we're the foundation of the IT services throughout the entire city. There is an org chart there, as you can see, there are a couple of holes there, we are working with the HR department to plug those holes, we do have one of our newest members, Edwin Endosa, he was just onboarded in January, and he's moving along nicely. One of the things that we also do is I do rotate the staff regularly, so that I minimize the amount of information silos that are out there, we don't just have a city side and a police side, we rotate everybody around so that everybody is aware of what's going on and how to support all the departments on all the sides. Who do we support? Like I said, we support all the city departments, and that also includes the police department, all the bureaus within the police department, all the vehicles, the Area G truck, and I'm gonna pause for a moment here, because what a lot of folks don't know is, and one of the reasons why the IT department actually is under the police department and not its own department by itself, is because we also have a very large public safety data processing unit, we have been doing this for close to 25 years now, there is, when City Manager Norris says that the city of Hawthorne is the center of the South Bay when it comes to these types of data systems, that is the absolute truth, there is, other than LSO and CHP themselves, there is not a South Bay agency that is not or has not been dependent upon a Hawthorne data system, all the radios, all of the fire dispatch systems, they're all managed, they all source from our three data centers that we have here within Hawthorne. So let's talk a little bit about stats, we have roughly 80 servers, almost 100 desktops, 95 printers, 480 phones, there's roughly 420 cameras out there now, there's close to 200 unique software applications that my team needs to be familiar with, know how to manage, so that when it's 3:00 AM and a user has a problem, we get a telephone call, we can walk them through it, right? We handle roughly 9,000 service tickets a year, helping users. One of the other questions that does come up is cybersecurity, of course, it's on the forefront of everybody's mind, it is a top priority for us, literally every day, my department is in battle with the forces that are out there, we actually partner with multiple agencies, both commercial and state and federal, we work with them to find whatever holes there are in our systems, what the best practices are, we meet the current standards, so that we can keep all of our systems safe. As an aside, I had the opportunity to be one of three agencies who represented the state of California in April to do a nationwide tabletop exercise on cybersecurity, that was a lot of fun, really eye-opening as well, to meet a lot of my peers in other states. So, what are some of the projects that we do have in the works? This is a small snapshot, on the city data side, of course, AI expansion between the Wordly, City Bot, COBA pilot, we have an electronic document management solution that we're currently slow rolling to all the departments, the Tyler Enterprise system, desktop replacements, the city logo branding, on our public data side, we're assisting the police department, standing up the real-time information center, of course, the citywide camera system is ever-expanding, we have a firearm detection system that we're currently deapplying, this is AI-based, it uses the city cameras to look for a silhouette of a weapon, and then it notifies the police department, and of course, multi- It uses the city cameras to look for a silhouette of a weapon, and then it notifies the, the police department. And of course, multi-factor authentication, which is going to be everyone's friend in the police department. On the infrastructure side, we have microwave systems, replacement, backup, replacement. Microwave is one of the interesting things that Hawthorne actually has its own microwave backbone that connects all of our major facilities. What that allows us to do is not be reliant upon commercial vendors, saving us a lot of money. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Great presentation. Everybody good?
Uh, to the chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh. I'm really excited for, just looking through your PowerPoint, I'm excited for the Wordly, the A I expansion that we talked about sometime back in April when I kind of hinted to getting some additional information and assistance because we knew that we were going to be heading that way eventually. I spoke a little bit about it probably a couple of months ago with regards to A I potentially being used in the city clerk's office to extract ordinances and things like this that are normally paper. Trying to get that back, you know, in a way that's electronically based, and we could find that quickly through retention and other efforts electronically. And then also the request for public records request. And all of that, you know, might take some time, especially the public records request because there are some items on, on those that are not for public use, right? Some of that is privileged information that would ultimately come from the city attorney's office on whether or not that would be information that's released. But having said that, I'm excited for all of it. I'm excited especially for the Wordly, the translation of sixty languages. I know Councilmember Montero and I was having a good time looking at that and seeing his Portuguese language being translated. So all of that is exciting. I look forward to additional security practices, cybersecurity practices that we could implement. I know we're entertaining another source potentially to help with us in that. I want to just keep pushing however we can to assist you in your department. Our city's going to grow. There's going to be additional departments being added, that's a given. We know that we want to implement emergency preparedness and get our management system back up. So having said that, that's additional lines, that's additional computer use, that's additional resources. And so with the new city hall coming, all of that needs to be, you know, something that you're going to be working hard on, I'm sure, and your staff. Thank you for giving us the explanation of how it's managed in your department, who does what, and how I T is very important to all of us and the security, the security factor behind that most importantly. But thank you, Josh, for your presentation, we appreciate you greatly.
To the chair. Thank you, Josh. I have to tell you that five years ago, you know, when we talk about I T, in none of this thing, you know, it was, we couldn't see what you guys were doing over there, right? Especially over the, the, some of the focus on the basement. So we didn't know what this thing, but bringing that, this to us is very important to expose how important nowadays technology is, right? And then when you saying that, you know, Hawthorne is a forefront of technology, and that's no surprise because, you know, we have invested so much into, into technology, into the new system, and then even the cybersecurity, right? Because even the other day, I learned that we have one of the strongest cybers, you know, inside our system that was very difficult to hack. So, so that's, it's outstanding because, you know, nowadays, every second technology and system change, so we have to be up to date. So I'm glad to see that we are up to the task, and you have a team, and I'm just going to keep fingers crossed that you've got your five other people filled soon, all right? So keep doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you for assembling this presentation and taking into incorporating the feedback from my city council colleagues. Great job, let's give them a round of applause. Sometimes it's good to put something like this together to kind of just appreciate the expanse of what we have. And even for Josh too, being able to assemble this report, you know, you know, you're taking on a big responsibility and, you know, it's, it's no little task, brother, so, great job. The guidelines for oral communications, please.
Want to roll call?
Huh?
Want to roll call?
We just?
We did it for the, uh, the first meeting.
We didn't, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Manning? Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Thank you for the reminder right there. The oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Alaric Simon?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff. As always, it's a pleasure to come before you and speak. My name is Alaric Simon. I'm a long-term resident of the Hawthorne community. And on behalf of the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club, our mission is to help give free vision screenings to our community. And I'm here, we had a big screening on August seventeenth last month, and I want to thank Kiwanah, the Parks and Recreations for extending their services to allow us to bring this to the community. It was a successful event, and I look forward to doing it bigger and better next time. So I can give you a brief recap of what actually happened. We seen fifty-nine patients. Out of the fifty-nine patients, only four needed prescriptions, ten needed to be able to be made optical, their glasses from an optical lab. We actually made prescriptions as they go through the screening. At the end, we make, we tried to match them with a free pair of recycled glasses. When that's not possible, they make them at another lab, another organization fulfills it and sends it back to me, and then I pass it out to the community. There were forty-five recycled eyeglasses given out. Eight patients needed assessment treatment for glaucoma. One patient needed surgical treatment for a teragium on at least one eye. One patient received lifestyle advice for dry macular degenerization. Two patients needed cataract surgery on at least one eye. One patient needed laser surgery for narrow interior chamber angles. Nine of the patients were eighteen years or younger. Twenty patients received eyeglasses for the first time. And of the forty-five recycled eyeglasses, just one only needed a reader. That was a beautiful turnout because, like I said, anytime you're helping the community, if you help one person, it's a success. So we helped fifty-nine. When this organization comes out and do these screenings, we want to see a hundred, two hundred, three hundred people come out. And I look at a list like this and just think of what would happen if those eight people didn't come out, or those people didn't come out to catch this early detection. So as we move forward, I look forward to doing at least a monthly screening with a mobile screening unit, and I'm working with some other organizations in the community so that we can provide more free screenings. In L A County, you have over five hundred thousand people who are visually impaired and don't know it. We want to attack that market, and that's what I'm planning to do and grow with our Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club and hang our hat on free vision screenings. We have, we'll have a meeting tomorrow, but the organization is one of the oldest organizations in the community, and I want to spike it to eighty-six years. So I want to keep it thriving and keep it here for another eighty years, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Let's give them a round of applause.
Yay, Alaric.
Oscar Medrano?
Good evening, everyone. I'm new at this, so just bear with me. Yeah, my concern was mostly, you know, the homeless, you know, on Imperial Board, the people with the drugs, you know, I have my son, you know, we walk on occasion, and we kind of trample over that almost on a daily basis. You know, there's people out there all the time. You know, I own two homes, one north here of North Hawthorne, another one southeast Hawthorne. So I know that they have, we have problems throughout different areas of Hawthorne. But, you know, I live here and I've spent a lot of money on permits to build my home and everything. It's just a lot of money that I have spent, and I didn't think it was going to get like this. And so I do have a concern, you know. I know that they put that fence over there, it kind of helped. They kind of tore down a part of it again. Me personally, I would have put, you know, brick, because that's, you know, obviously, if they want to get through, they would get through, but it would hold a little bit better than just a fence. You know, they could, got cutter, wire cutters, and, you know, they just go right through. You know, I do feel for the people that are homeless, I do, I, you know, I, because I don't know, I could be there some, someday too, you know, it's just, I think that there is many other locations, commercial locations, industrial locations where all this could have been placed. But, you know, it's just one of those things that I, just, it kind of bothers me, you know. It's just, I have my son, I have my teenage daughter, and, you know, they see that, you know, a lot. They, they, they do drugs there. You know, this is a small city. So on occasion, if you guys have time, just drive by, take a look. You could, you could clearly see it from Imperial, you could clearly see it from Gravilla when you guys go down that street, you know, it's just, it's a big eyesore. There's trash there all the time. They do only gardening once a week. I wish that the city council could do something because I know that, you know, you guys could impose on that property owner there to have cleanup a little bit more often than once a week. I know that the sweeper goes once a week, which is fine, but as long as the apartment building there that, you know, will be cleaned up, I think it'll be all right. As far as the people there, you know, if it's a place for the homeless, why is there people still sleeping out there? That's the part that I don't get. I, you know, I wish I could understand that part, but I don't have that power of city council where you guys could send a letter and say, hey, you know, what's going on? Let us in, you know, what, what can we do to make things better? There's got to be something that can be done. You know, it's just, I don't know, I just wish we could do something about it. Kind of irritating, but, you know, appreciate the time up here, and thank you. Have a good night.
Lili Fernandez?
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, Council. Lili Fernandez, I am North Hawthorne resident. I actually think he is a neighbor two blocks around, so we probably have the same concern. I'm here to speak on the huge marijuana plant mural at the cannabis shop on Imperial and Inglewood Avenue. It's quite a popular topic amongst the neighbors. There have been phone calls and emails made about this blight by several residents. We are appalled that Mr. McLean, Planning Director of our city, did not notify the council about this mural. The children are the ones we need to protect with such visuals. From zero to even eighteen years old, they're still children, they're not grown. It's a disgrace and shameful. City of Hawthorne bears full responsibility for not policing itself on this, what I'm speaking of. I will close my oral communication by stating, on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, city council meeting, council members voted for cannabis shops to be open in our community, not the people, as some of you council people have stated. It is confirmed here on the YouTube video and the Daily Brief on November third, twenty twenty-two edition. Please stop spreading disinformation on how the city voted on it. We did not vote for weed shops in our city. Take this as a verbal warning, and please retract your city media outlets and social media from sp- spreading such disinformation. Thank you and good night, and also, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's emotional for me because I don't like this. This, I see our city going in a different direction, and we're supposed to be going in a positive direction. We are the opening of L A X of all what we call the twenty twenty-five Olympics that are coming in, yet this is what we have to present to them. A weed shop here on Imperial and Inglewood, and another weed shop on, uh, same Imperial and Hawthorne, back to back. And then I'm told, and I hear the council people saying, we are having six more, you're adamant. No, keep it away, keep it on the side, keep it away from the children, keep it away from our tourists. They don't need to see this, we don't need to see this. It's something that you can have, but not in my backyard, you know? You can drink, but don't drink on the street. Whatever you do, you can smoke, but don't do it in front of my face. It's just that. And, um, well, we're having elections, so everybody will be doing their homework. And we know who you are and who also always tells us that we voted on, we did not. And if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, and tell me where I voted for cannabis shops, because I did not. And I vote every time. Also, please do something about the traffic lights.
Sorry, Mayor, your time is up now.
Okay, thank you. Please do something about the traffic lights, it's too much. We don't want to wait on them, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Please form a line. Okay, we have one more person. All right, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Council, my name is Richard Hune. I want to give you an update on the Beach Boy Landmark.
Oh, yeah.
You know, in two thousand and four, we started, I started working on it with, because the Hawthorne Parks and Recreation Foundation was asked to collect the money because we are a nonprofit organization, and that way the donors could get a rebate on their, on their taxes. Two thousand and five, it was dedicated, and I have been selling bricks on that landmark since two thousand and four. There are twenty-eight blank bricks on the landmark today that are going to be covered very soon, within the next week, and that means they're all covered, all bricks on that landmark. We received in donations over a hundred and four thousand dollars, and we, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars. So we've got a little, about four thousand dollars in, for maintenance of the, of the landmark. The only thing that's going to be done after the Beach Boys are, the bricks are engraved, and actually, engraving means it's a sandblasting process. We'll do some graffiti, and a graffiti coating, and then we'll sit and watch it. And there's people going by there all the time. I was, I stopped by the other day to see if our guys were working on the bricks, and a couple from Seattle stopped by and said, yeah, what's all this all about? We had a little conversation, and that happens quite often, almost every day. Thank you.
How much are the bricks?
They're done. There were one fifty the last.
So there's no more?
No more.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. I see no one else here for oral communication, so oral communication is closed. So ordered. Your consent calendar, Ms. City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. There are items three through six for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Resolution number eight four eight three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the aircraft purchase agreement, and addendum to, addendum one to agreement for the sale of the nineteen eighty-eight M D five hundred E helicopter, Air Fifty-Five, by the Hawthorne Police Department. Item six, resolution number eight four eight six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing submittal of the two thousand and twenty-four local housing trust fund application for adoption.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you. So let's see. Okay, so, public hearing?
Item seven, now is the time and place for a public hearing and approval of resolution eight four eight five to establish planning department fees. Planning department declaration filed, no written communications were received.
Is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic? If not, oral communication is closed ordered.
Resolution eight four eight five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California establishing fees for the planning department for adoption.
Uh, discussion. Mr. City Attorney, can you describe the increases or decreases or stabilization?
I think I should defer to Mr. McLean on this matter.
That's good. Most of the fees have actually decreased because we've shifted a lot of the responsibility for processing of applications down the chain a little bit for less expensive staff rather than having directors do it. So, um, but some things have actually increased and everything is based on the study which is attached to the, to the, uh, resolution. And it shows you how many hours each staff position is expected to put into each of these efforts. And there's also some other additional, uh, inputs overhead, I think they call it. But if you have any specific questions, we do have our consultant that prepared the special study here, too.
Um, I think at the top level through you would be sufficient.
Okay.
Um, so can we describe this vote that we're going to take today as a, uh, not economic benefit for those wishing to develop here in the city of Hawthorne or residents who want to make some changes to their homes?
Yes, a lot of our most expensive fees are actually going to be coming down and so that will be a benefit, uh, that should hopefully translate to some additional, um, construction and stuff going on or, or different kinds of applications the planning department processes. Um, and there's a, a few fees which we never had a fee for before and we've added fees because we want to be able to recover our costs and not do it out of, you know, at, at, have it supplemented by the entire city. And there's a, several fees that we've deleted because we never do them, such as relocation fees, nobody's moving houses around anymore.
Okay, so, um, my hope is that, uh, the prices of the materials to build, uh, will also come down and, uh, that this isn't the only benefit that we have, that the state gets its business in order, you know, the country gets its bu- business in order, you know, and just everything comes down with lumber, materials and, yeah, that's why we haven't seen a lot of development.
It's one factor, yeah.
So, I would like to make a motion? Second. Please vote. Thank you, Mr. McLean.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. Item eight?
Item eight, now is the time and place for a public hearing for consideration to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, CAPR, related to the Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, and Home Investment, Home Investment Partnerships Program. Housing Department declarations of publication filed. Recommended motion, the staff recommends that the city council, one, conduct the public hearing and receive comments on the draft two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Two, approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four CAPR for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program. Number three, authorize the city manager or the designee to submit the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four CAPR to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Is there anybody wishing to address this item on the CAPR? If not, I declare the hearing closed, ordered.
Mayor, for discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I T, I don't, I should have called you earlier, but I, I know you're doing presentations. I don't have the, the electronic, uh, agenda to look at some of the, the extra pages here that I need to make a definitive, uh, definitive
Decision.
Decision, so I want to know, um, real quick, C D B G, that's, uh, that's coming from what division, housing?
Right.
Okay. I, I just want to know, are, have we been consistent with the C D B G's Community Development Block Grant monies and where it's allocated? Have we changed anything, um, most recently for, for approval or has it been consistent for the last, how many times do we do this?
Annually.
Annually. Have we changed it in the last couple of years or has it been consistent with where it's being allocated?
As it relates to the CAPR or the action plan?
The action plan.
Action plan was just updated at the last city council meeting with the substantial amendment.
Okay. And the Home, Home Investment Partnership Program?
Home as well, it's included with the action plan and the reporting is also included with the CAPR for both.
Okay, but we haven't had like any major changes or anything, uh, that more dollars went here versus, we took away monies from any, any of those?
Well, at the last, uh, city council meeting, you approved the substantial amendment that did change where money was allocated.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't have a chance to review it. I don't want to delay because I know we're up on a deadline. I just wanted to know if there was like a significant change that we made that, but I'll have to take a look at it. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
There's a presentation for this item, would you all like to hear it?
Sure, please.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Mr. David Munoz with L D M and Associates to present that for you and what we agree.
Bye. All right, lovely. Well, good evening, uh, council members and mayor and great suit, city manager. Um, so today's conversation is about the consolidated, uh, annual performance and evaluation report. It's essentially a report card, uh, discussing what we did relative to what we said we were going to do. So to ground our conversation, we'll give you a little bit of background on the program. Then we'll talk about the five-year goals that the city established back in two thousand twenty, um, and that should maybe help clarify, uh, questions regarding the types of projects that are consistently funded, uh, followed by the annual accomplishments, so just focusing on what was accomplished from July first of two thousand twenty-three, uh, through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. So with a little bit of background, uh, both the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Programs are, uh, administered by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, the city, uh, is an entitlement grantee that receives an annual allocation from HUD uh, for C W G and home funds. On average, the city receives about a million dollars in C W G funds and approximately six hundred thousand in home funds. There are a variety of eligible activities that the city could carry out under each grant program. And at the end of the program year, we're supposed to report to HUD, uh, what was accomplished, how much was spent, um, and of those individuals that were assisted, how many are low and moderate income residents, because that is the target population, um, that these funds are intended to assist. Um, so again, this report is really restricted, um, to the performance or accomplishments from the past year, um, which is why some of those numbers may not look, um, may look smaller compared to the five-year goal, which you see on this table here. Uh, so in two thousand twenty, uh, the city established six primary goals, um, which served as a framework for how the city was going to invest, uh, these annual allocations of funds. Across each of those six goals that was established, um, the city has utilized its funds to make progress towards the, that five-year vision that was previously established. Um, so starting with affordable housing preservation, there's been homeowner occupied rehabilitation projects that have been carried out throughout the, the pro, the five-year program year. Um, and one thing to note about some of these figures is, number one, in two thousand twenty, when these goals were established, uh, we were, you know, hit with COVID and so a lot of construction stopped. Um, so when you look at housing development, that has obviously, um, caused a bit of an obstacle, but the city has also been able to make some progress, um, in making sure that we are able to accomplish those goals by the end of next year. As you'll see in the next couple of slides, uh, the city has made significant progress in the rehab of the six city-owned properties, which will result in eighteen housing units that could be occupied by low-income tenants. Um, then in terms of affordable housing development, uh, the last council meeting, the city approved, uh, the reallocation of certain funds to potentially invest in a new project, uh, to acquire, uh, the plot or a parcel of land, um, and then develop it to be utilized for, uh, either homeownership housing or, uh, affordable rental housing. In terms of fair housing services and public services, the city has consistently been able to make progress towards those five-year goals and is on pace to, um, satisfy those requirements that we set, said we were going to do with HUD. And then the last two, uh, which are public facilities and infrastructure improvements, um, the city just recently completed an alley improvements project on multiple alleys, uh, that are located in, uh, predominantly low and moderate income areas, uh, which resulted in the benefit, uh, for fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty, uh, residents within Hawthorne. And then finally, we have the Economic Development Opportunities, which is a commercial facade rehabilitation program, um, whereby we would be able to work with a couple of, um, businesses in the city of Hawthorne to kind of spruce up the place a little bit and make it a little bit more welcoming and inviting. Um, two of those projects are currently underway, um, but due to the way that HUD wants us to report these accomplishments and avoid duplication of reporting, we generally only report it until that project has been completed. So even though we have two commercial facade rehab projects underway, we have an additional four housing rehab projects underway, all eighteen of those, uh, rental, uh, housing units are underway, we don't want to report them until we can officially say the job's been done. So in terms of what was accomplished this year, uh, we completed a total of eight housing, uh, rehab projects, four of those were still underway in the construction phase as of June thirtieth, so that's why you don't see those reported here. We already talked about the eighteen, uh, rental units as well as the new affordable housing development project, uh, the public services ranging from, uh, the teen center, uh, to some homeless and domestic violence services as well as fair housing services, um, met and exceeded their benchmarks in many cases. Um, and then finally, we have, uh, those public facilities and infrastructure projects as well as the commercial rehab projects that we previously discussed. In terms of how that translates to what we said we were going to invest in these types of projects versus what was spent, um, this final slide kind of illustrates what we said we were going to spend, what has been spent and based on what the previous slide says, you can see that, um, thus far, it's been a fairly fruitful investment, um, and we've been able to accomplish and assist the, the number of residents that we wanted to. Um, so that, the reason why you see the two million in home funds under affordable housing preservation is just to demonstrate how much work has really gone into rehab each and every unit, uh, to make it, you know, safe, habitable, um, and really up to, to standards, uh, to make sure that all residents, including low-income tenants, uh, have access to that type of housing. That's about it. Any questions?
Yes, to the chair. Thank you so much. Um, I, I brought it up and, uh, I brought up the, uh, the notes. How are we helping? Because I, I, I received a couple of questions from a couple of seniors. Um, in Los Angeles, there's a program called the Handy Workers Program, right? And when I used to work casework, uh, folks sometimes applied for the Handy Workers Program, which assisted them with rehabbing their home, whether it was a roof, whether it needed stairs, whether it need railing, things like this, right? Um, we have that in place here.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Uh, how many applicants have applied for and how much money roughly is available, say for instance, for the assisting the occupied, um, uh, rehab?
So under the owner occupied rehab, if you are a senior, um, so over the age of sixty-two for HUD purposes, um, and are deemed to be low and moderate income, you're eligible for up to a twenty-five thousand dollar grant and then up to an additional forty-five thousand dollar loan that has zero percent interest, um, at this time, yes. Um, so the combination could result in up to a total of seventy thousand dollars worth of investments in, um, necessary types of improvements, so it's not luxury, we're not just installing, you know, a hot tub or a jacuzzi.
Sure.
It's, you know, hey, do you need the ADA accessibility improvements into the shower? Um, do you have, you know, G F C I outlets in the kitchen, uh, or anywhere that there's water and those types of improvements?
And, 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 you know, there's a, there's some folks that are not aware of it, they're not aware that we have this type of program available, right? Um, I, it's probably already projected what, what we have currently, what we're going to use and those applicants that were successful in applying and are going to receive, you know, however much they were qualified for. Um, I also know that a lot of the seniors are required to do the actual research for a contractor. And, um, I don't know, I don't know, um, if that plays anything to, to, you know, for the rehab. I know, we don't have any say on who they select, right? They have to do their own due diligence and select a contractor and, and go from there, right? And, and how long are they, um, once they're given an okay for an approval for rehab, do they have a period of time in which they have to rehab before they lose the money or it's not, no longer available?
So they do have a period of time, but regarding the contracting, we do go out, we put the bid out for them, they don't have to go out and put out a bid and find their own contractors. Once the list is created from that bid, then they make the selection, we don't make the selection for them. So we do that work for them. Um, and then after that, they select that person and we, we go to work. And we, we have a process that the contractors must follow by according to their contract. So once they're approved to do the work, they must start the work and complete it within a time period and if they're not, then, you know, then the project will be held up and it'll be an incon- inconvenience for the person who's actually applying for that project. So yes, it can't go on forever. Um, a lot of times, some of the, the tenants or applicants, applicant actually make it a little more difficult because they want things done a certain way, their way.
Yeah.
But they do have to follow the regulations or that of the contractor that they selected. Um, and sometimes we have to go back out to bid if they're unable to work together, which would again delay the process, but it is allowable and we try to work with both agencies so that we hold the contractor for our next project and that we're able to, um, you know, satisfy the tenant that we're working with.
Okay, so at the end of the day, um, it's really up to them, how soon they could get started and how soon they could finish.
Right, compliance is always the thing, once they provide the necessary documentation and everything goes smoothly, then we just keep the process going so that we can complete the project and move on to the next one and they can see a finished result for sure.
So when's the next round for selections of, uh, applicants that could apply for this type of assistance?
This program is ongoing.
Ongoing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it's on our website, they should be aware of that.
Our website, we do door knockers, we go door to door, we, we put it everywhere.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your, you being here and your patience, uh, and, and, uh, I know you're a regular, uh, your agency's a regular in assisting us with, um, our plan and getting this, uh, to HUD so that we could comply and as we're mandated to do, so appreciate your work. Thank you so much. Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I make a motion to approve?
I second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
City manager's consent calendar, ma'am?
Item nine, progress payment number two in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars fifty cents due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California for the Zala Davis Park renovation project, two four dash zero four. Item ten, progress payment number four and final acceptance in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars fifty cents due to Best Contracting Services Incorporated of Gardena, California for Betty Ainsworth Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project. Item eleven, City of Hawthorne Senior Center, city project number two four dash zero three, out to bid. Item thirteen, progress payment number two in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred five dollars due to Partis Air Incorporated of Los Angeles, California for Hawthorne Memorial Center HVAC System Upgrade, project number two three dash zero eight. Item fourteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five blanket purchase orders, Mr. Mayor may have a motion to approve all items on the city manager's consent calendar except for item twelve.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Item twelve, please, Felice. Uh, yeah, if you could read the item first.
Item twelve, American Rescue Act, uh, Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, update and request for approval of recommendations.
What's the recommended motion?
Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council provide approval on the reallocation recommendations and receive and file the ARPA Economic Development Plan Program Update, Programs. Program Update, Programs Update.
All right. Please proceed.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to bring you an update on the ARPA programs. We are requesting reallocations of some of the programs that you initially approved and some of those, and Mr. Kendran will also be helping to give a brief description on the new programs that we have that we want to implement and critical deadlines. So just briefly, the reallocation recommendation from staff is for revenue recovery programs. The EnerGov Virtual City Hall Project, we would like to allocate an additional $140,000. The revitalization of low-income housing units, we would like to add an additional Recovery projects, we would like to increase the administration to $65,000. Telehealth, $375,000. That contract was already approved, so this is just allocating additional funding for that contract. For pallet shelters, we'd like to allocate $364,180. For the revitalization of low-income housing through the recovery project side, we'd like to add an additional $1.1 million. For cybersecurity, which is a new program, we'd like to request $94,000. The EOC upgrades, we'd like to add $200,000. And for the Civic Center Park, we'd like to request $218,555,000 for a total reallocation of $2.6 million. The city has currently spent, of the $30.5 million received for ARPA funding, the city has spent $21,724,172. And Mr. Kendran will go over a couple of the new projects that we have going on.
Mayor and city council, it's my pleasure to, to address you again this evening and give you an update, as Felice mentioned. I think it's really critical to understand that the ARPA funding that was allocated in 2021 from the federal government, which is the American Rescue Act, has some very specific time restrictions as far as how those funds must be allocated and spent. So the requirement is that projects must be allocated funding by December 31st of 2024, and they must be spent by December 31st of 2026. So that's the reason for the reallocation. There were certain projects that your city staff felt that maybe couldn't be completed by 2026, and so those funds needed to be reallocated by the end of this calendar year. So that's why the $2.6 million of reallocation funding is before you this evening, so that those funds can be allocated by the end of this calendar year. So Felice had mentioned the, some of the projects that you're reallocating those funds to. Let me describe, excuse me, let me describe a couple of those. One of them relates actually to the presentation you just had regarding the home funding. So one of the requests is to allocate $1.1.48 million to the home funding program so that you can expand the, the amount that you're receiving from the federal government using ARPA funds. And one of the elements of this also is to include additional staffing to assist with the backlog of applications, because there, you know, there is a little bit of a backlog. So you can use some of your ARPA funding to add additional staffing so that you can speed up that process, so that you can actually have more people who will receive funding through that program. The second also was something that you heard about earlier this evening, is for cybersecurity software, $94,000. One of the requirements or one of the eligible categories is to enhance the city's ability to provide IT services to your public. And so cybersecurity is a critical element of that. So that is a project that is also included in that funding. The other is for $200,000 for upgrades to your emergency operations center in the form of additional IT upgrades, supplies for your EOC, so that'll enhance that, that program for you. And then the last is you have the, a project for your civic center expansion. One of the elements of that is a park element. And for disadvantaged communities or lower-income communities, open space and parks are an eligible expense of using ARPA funds. So the recommendation would be to use $218,000 towards that project over the next couple of years. So those are the four new projects in addition to the ones that Felice had mentioned to you previously. So be more than happy to answer any questions regarding the timeline and expenditure of funds or any of the projects that are being recommended.
Thank you. To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for your time. I had a couple of questions. You just made mention with regards to use of the money, ARPA money for staff purposes, right? To hire new staff, hire staff to work on a department, right? So the backlog, you talked about being able to hire that stuff, that staff. How long would the allocation of monies be for the, for those to be employed? How long would that?
Defer to the city manager to answer that.
I'm sorry, councilwoman, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. With regards to ARPA money being used to hire staff for the backlog, how long will this money cover employment for those individuals that apply?
It very, it depends on the positions. Hopefully, we're looking, as Mr. Durant said, and spend the money the next two years. So we're looking to be very frugal but knowledgeable how we spend the money, so I'm estimating two years.
Roughly, okay. That could be, I'm assuming for the $94,000 allocation for the cybersecurity to IT, I'm assuming that some of the 94 can also be used to hire additional staff in IT?
I don't believe that that's part of what the recommendation is. I believe it's for actually a contract for a vendor.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I'm really, I really, I really want to advocate and champion, you know, cybersecurity and assuring that all of our IT equipment, et cetera, are, are, you know, on point, right? I'm just curious, how do you arrive to a $94,000? Why not just round it off to $100,000?
If, if I can defer, but I believe it was a bid that was actually received from a vendor that's actually the contract amount.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, you talked about housing, you talked about $364,000 and $180,000 for pallet shelter. You know, there's always concerns about homeless, right? We've been trying to work on homeless, councilmember, myself and some other colleagues here to address the homeless issues. When we tried to, you know, build pallet shelter housing, there was all this pushback, right? And then we have a new hotel that's full of homeless over there that was brought in by Mayor Bass, LA. So having said that, okay, my speaker just went off. How can I, how can we, how else are we going to use the $364,000, $180,000? Is it going to be for the intake center, for intake, for additional housing to be built, pallet shelter housing? How are we doing this?
So I can take that question. What we intend to do is look at expanding the services at our current tiny home shelter, but also look at maybe purchasing additional tiny homes within the two years that we have to spend.
Okay.
We don't have a location set yet, but after talking to staff, what we are considering doing is stockpiling those pallet shelters, so when we do fund a property, we'll have those tiny homes to erect.
Right. Could this also include portfolio for our own, looking to, for our own, for purchase of building structures, hotels, et cetera, for our own? Can that kind of money be used for that too, ARPA money?
I'll take that question.
Yeah, that would be an eligible expense if you wanted to use that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I, I just want people to know and understand who's watching. We are trying to address the homeless issues here. It's not that we're not and that we're not allowing to be condoned. We're just trying to work hard to find monies to address all of our, all of our concerns. You said it needs to be used in the next two years, and we need to be able to approve that so that we could have it used before the requirement, which is December 31st of '26, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I like the fact that we're doing the EOC. I've been talking about that for years. Emergency preparedness, you know, is, is, is one of my key issues that we haven't really grabbed a hold of. You know, we have a whole downstairs basement that could be used for that. So $200,000 for emergency center, I really appreciate that and you guys, you know, taking that to heart. I really appreciate that. There's some other things, but I'll let other colleagues take my time.
I just want to know, from that, because it was about 34 million that we received?
We received 30.5.
Yeah, 30. So we have spent $21 million, right? So, and now we just relocate 2.6.
So other projects are still ongoing.
And still ongoing. Okay, so we still have some little money still going.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I make a motion? Please vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you. Discussion action items. Councilwoman Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kim, could you address these for me? There were a couple concerns that I encountered in the community. One, it was about the placement of banners and signs on businesses, and this has specifically come up because of the election time and, you know, candidates have been asked, asked to put, or ask businesses to display their banners, and some businesses are in oppression that they're not allowed to do so. So I wanted to get a little bit of clarity about how that works, what the rules are with that. And same thing with commissioner appointment, that procedure of adding commissioners to a commission and removing commissioners from a commission. And I was hoping the city attorney could, you know, present that to us, and of course, we can discuss it as well.
Sure. Thank you. Councilman Patterson?
Yeah, we got item, item 15, and then you could open up the other one.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll separate that. So item 15 are on the issue of the laws regarding the placing of campaign signs and banners. I too have been approached by somebody who's running for an office and said that someone had asked her to remove her banner because there is no permit. The permits are required, which is not true under the Hawthorne Municipal Code. So I separated these two, three areas, and because there's been some misperceptions about the laws, the state of the laws, on the banners and signs. The first is, you know, of course, First Amendment, basically, the cities such as us or the state cannot regulate the content of signs or banners unless there is a compelling reason. That's a, that's a very strict standard that, that under the First Amendment. So the campaign signs are, are signs that fits within that. Under the state law, and this, this is where there's been some confusions in the past. Every election, I get questioned about how can someone put up a political sign earlier than the 90 days before the election date? And there's a confusion over the state law that deals with state property. State property, when, especially dealing with signs that are close to freeways and whatnot, there are a whole bunch of regulations dealing with permits that deals with state properties and signs and, you know, as you can tell, it stems from billboards and things of that nature. But there's an exception for temporary political signs, which is an exemption under state law. And that says that if it's placed within 90 days of the general election, so November 5th, so three months before the general election date, if it's a temporary political sign and it's beyond 660 feet of freeways, you don't need a state permit. Now, that's only on state-owned property, and it really does not come into play here in the city of Hawthorne because most of the signs, the issues are not whether it's on a state property. I don't know of any single state property that's outside of 660 feet of the freeways that's within the city of Hawthorne that has been an issue because of political signs. So I don't think, I think that's been a kind of misconceived interpretation of the state laws. It really doesn't come into play under the, you have the First Amendment, right? If you're a candidate, to place your campaign signs or banners in any property that's not owned by the city or the state. So as long as you have permission from, let's say, a business or private property that you want to place even before 90, even earlier than 90 days before the election, as long as you have that consent, you could do that, okay? And the, and the First Amendment protects you from doing that. And I'll go through what's series of the ordinance that addresses campaign signs and banners. First is that we have an ordinance, you cannot place campaign signs or banners on public property, that city-owned property. So you cannot place it on city hall, public parks, things of that nature, or on the city streets. Then if you do that, the code enforcement will take down those signs and, and hold it for you and for you to retrieve it. You can, you can put campaign signs that would encroach upon city-owned property, kind of similar to the one I just mentioned. You can't place campaign signs, let's say, blocking a street or sidewalk or things of that nature. Non-commercial signs are allowed on residential property. So even in a residential area, as long as it's not a commercial sign, so that, as long as it's not an advertisement for business or things of that nature, political, political signs and banners are allowed in residential property. And here is a, under Hawthorne Municipal Code, section 17.35.030, political signs do not require permit. So whoever's been saying that this business, if you, in order for you to have a banner or political banner, you got to have a permit, you don't have a permit, you have to pull it, that's not true. So under Hawthorne Municipal Code, political signs do not require a city permit. In non-residential, on this commercial industrial regulations applying to signs and banners, not applied to political signs. So in commercial and industrial areas, we have regulations requiring permits and things of that nature for signs. We have restrictions for that, but it doesn't apply to political signs. So basically, you got to go back to our constitutional First Amendment. If you're running for a campaign and you have signs or banners, you have First Amendment right to place that, and that overrides many of our, our city ordinance and things of that nature. So city ordinance is drafted in a way that it complies with the First Amendment requirements.
Thank you. Did you guys have any other questions about this topic?
Yes, I do, to the chair. So it says, from what I understand, you don't need a permit. You're talking to people, if they say that's fine, if it's their personal property, that's fine, private property. We shouldn't be intimidated by folks that are running for office, that are calling the businesses and telling them they can't do it. That's not true. And thank you for that clarification, because we had a candidate come up and say that specifically. Unfortunately, he had to have his removed because of the misinformation that was given to him. I want to address even further. So you talked about the campaign signs and the 90 days. We have also a fee that's in there, right? After 90 days, you have to have them removed. If they're not removed, you inquire a fee every day that they're not removed, from what I understand, correct?
I'm not aware of that specifically. You mean Hawthorne Municipal Code?
Yes.
Okay, there may be, I didn't, I didn't see that. But after the election, all campaign signs must be removed?
Right.
Yeah.
And there's a fee. So when I was former, when I was a city clerk, I'm very familiar with it and the complaints that used to come behind it. A little further, though, and maybe we need to implement a new ordinance that speaks to the damage of signs and property, private property, which is campaign signs, banners, money that's being spent from our campaigns to replace them. Mine, for instance, have been burned, have been removed, have been punched holes and run through zip ties, et cetera. Stop it, telling you here, stop it. I'm saying it, stop it. Stop running zip ties through my property and hanging your stuff off of mine, and I'm sure other candidates feel the same. There needs to be language that is implemented for ordinances that, that speaks to campaigns where all of this matters. Every candidate received from the city clerk's office a form, a general municipal elections November 5th form, with the list of requirements. The city clerk's office needs to look at item number five, Code of Fair Campaign, Code of Fair Campaign Practices. What that says basically that you're going to play nice, and that's not being done. So it needs to be a requirement, not an option, so remove the option, make it a requirement. And I'm going to go further. If you are found removing, damaging, destroying, burning, and you are found by a police officer and arrested, it's up to you as a candidate to follow charges, to file charges and ask for full prosecution. That's up to you. I know I'll do it, whoever it is. That's up to you. I know I'll do it, whoever it is that's doing it. Further, it's never been done. In our years of history, this happens every election cycle, every election cycle, and it's never been addressed. So, it's, it needs to come to an end, is what I'm saying. And as policymakers here, giving direction for ordinances to be made up to address all of that. And if there's more information that needs to be implemented, I look to my colleagues and the mayor to add whatever they feel they need to, uh, include.
So, um, there exist criminal laws dealing with destruction of other people's property under vandalism, things of that nature. It could be considered theft if they're taking, or stealing the signs, and it could be prosecuted. You can report to the police department. Now, what would happen if it's a misdemeanor? So, what, what would happen when it comes to our office, when it involves a victim that would be, the alleged victim would be members of the council or candidates running for an office, uh, our office would declare conflict and refer it out to the district attorney's office. But that's the way in which it's done, if it's, if someone is, uh, apprehended and prosecuted.
Yes.
There, I, I have no, without going into details, I understand a person was arrested and that person was a transient homeless person who was having mental issues, and that was referred to the district attorney's office. And we don't know the status because once it's referred due to appearance of a conflict, we would send to the district attorney's office, and we don't know the status of that. But we will know of one person that was apprehended.
Right, and was also told, um, that they were being paid to do it. So, again, there's a lot of political games that are being done, and it needs to stop. Uh, I thank the people that are calling, texting, and taking pictures and video and forwarding it. That's exactly what you should do. Because at the end of the day, uh, you should play nice, uh, and run your campaign professionally. And that's not happening. And so, I'm glad that Councilmember Patterson brought this item. It was coincidental because I was gonna do the same thing. So, thank you for doing that. Um, thank you for giving additional information. Anyone here wants to add to that, but, uh, all of this is important, including, I don't know if the city clerk's office wants to add to that because I know I was a city clerk and they're the ones that are seeing it. It's my understanding that additional items that need to be included, uh, require four-sixteens and four-tens, uh, that need to go to the city clerk's office, uh, monthly on a reporting basis. I have a treasurer, I've had him since two thousand and four. He does all my reporting. It's to the state of, state of California, Secretary of State, reports everything that I am, uh, earning through donations and spending. And it's a requirement that is, has to be posted. It's mandated by the state, by the city clerk's office.
So, um, if we can just keep to the topic here, which is a discussion action dealing with laws of signs and banners. And if you want to give further directive related to campaigns that's not dealing with signs and banners, you could do that during elected official reports and give me directives, and I'll be more than happy to look into it.
Okay, well, I added, I gave you, I gave you a directive already during public comment with Patterson. Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely, uh, something needs to be done because, uh, like Ms. English said, every time it is an election, people goes and destroy the sign, destroy banners. Like I said, you know, that, uh, because sometimes, you know, you work so hard to fundraising, to get money from the people, that's people's money, you know, and, and people should respect. Let the people decide on a ballot box. Don't try to cheat, uh, removing banners and, and, and signs. So, let people decide. If people can have trust in our system, it's democracy. We have the First Amendment's right, so do not go there and, or send your talk, so send people to do your, your dirty work. So, play fair and let the people decide on the ballot box and not to destroy property. So, I agree that we need to do some type of amendment of, of special debt sheet that Ms. English showed because each candidate signed that as, as, you know, as an oath to be fair and just. So, there should be respect of that. So, I, I agree that we should do something about it. Thank you.
All right. Item sixteen?
Item sixteen was to discuss commissioner appointments. And I just wanted to make sure there was some clarity for the community as to what the process is of adding new commissioners and removing commissioners. Mr. City Attorney, could you provide a report?
Thank you, Councilman Patterson. Um, based on your directive, I wanted to give the, the requirements under California Government Code, Section four zero six zero five. That's in a general law city such as City of Hawthorne with an elected mayor, the way commissioners, committees, or board members are selected. And that is the, the mayor has the exclusive authority to appoint an applicant for a commission or committee or board, and the council has the authority to approve or disapprove by majority vote. This is exclusively with the mayor's authority to appoint and councils to approve. Or to even remove is up to the council. So, you don't need a reason, but by a majority vote, any commissioner or committee or board member can be removed by majority vote of the council.
And could you, uh, also kind of touch on the recent ordinances that we've passed as far as term limits and staying on until something happens and then?
So, um, God, I'm losing track of time. I think it was this year, earlier this year, we passed an ordinance that set term limits for all commissioners. So, the term limits are four, it was four years. And that, you know, the, the term limits will not apply if we don't have the full membership of the commission. But, and you could also sit out for ninety days. If you've been termed out, you could sit out ninety days and you can reapply to be on the commission. So, essentially, that was what the term limits were for the commissioners.
And so, for a little bit of clarity on that, uh, of commission has five seats. And say, four of the five have, um, gone past their term. They'll still stay on that commission until a new commissioner has been nominated and approved by the council. Then that new commissioner will join and the oldest commissioner will be retired.
Correct. So, so let's say that you had, um, five commissioners and one has been termed out, and then you have a new applicant. Now, it will be up to the mayor to appoint an applicant to replace that person, and it will be up to the council to approve by majority vote. If that's the case, then you have a qualified new commissioner, and the termed-out commissioner would have to vacate the seat and a new commissioner would come in.
Thank you. That's all for me. I don't know if you guys had anything to say on that.
Item seventeen?
No, thank you, um, Councilmember Patterson. If there is, I'll bring it back. Thank you.
Item seventeen?
Do we have, uh, we have our consultant here with regards, thank you, can you?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Can you introduce yourself?
Sure, thank you. Uh, my name is Deema Galkin. I'm a director at Harrison Associates in the Community Development and Housing Team.
Thank you, sir. Um, I know there was direction at our previous council meeting with regards to this RFP on the Cordeary Housing. It's a, it's a property that the city's had for a long, long time. It, uh, did go out to bid, I think, believe, back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, anyway. They didn't have any money. They couldn't develop it. I want to know, uh, the question is regarding, let's see, the development of, of, of the RFP. So, the RFP went out, uh, it went to just nonprofit organizations, from what I understand. And then city council directed, uh, staff to send it out to everyone so that there's ample opportunity for everybody. And at the time that it, it was, uh, approved for, uh, public RFP, those that had received it prior, which was a two-week, uh, window, had the opportunity to work on that two weeks previously, right? So, I know there's a RFP date. What's the return date?
The deadline for, uh, proposals to be submitted is currently September twelfth, this Thursday.
How much housing is it?
We're waiting to see, uh, we're leaving it available for the developers to propose how many units they'd like to.
Oh, I see.
But in the RFP, uh, we gave an estimate of approximately a hundred units that the city's looking to develop.
Okay. City manager, we're not in a rush for this, are we? Are we in a rush to get, to get this back by the due date?
Can I, may I answer that?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. So, I'd like to explain a little bit about why we set the deadline the way we did.
Thank you.
And it's related to the local housing trust fund or LHTF grant application that the council approved on the earlier consent calendar. That application is due to the state, uh, on the seventeenth, next Tuesday. And in order to be more competitive for that grant application, we need to demonstrate that there's developer interest in developing in the city. And the way that's done is by having, uh, preliminary applications submitted from developers. So, we, uh, with that goal in mind of having some information about developers who are interested in developing in the city, we set the deadline of the twelfth. I, what we can do, um, at, at a minimum, what we need is just preliminary applications, so we don't necessarily need complete applications. And so, if there's interest, uh, either, uh, or desire from either the city council or from staff, what we can do is we can extend the deadline to submit a full application. And what our team will do is we'll reach out to the developers who expressed interest, uh, in developing, uh, in the city, and we'll ask for at least that minimum preliminary information that we need. Basically, um, a general picture of what the funding would look like for their development and how much funding they would request from the city. And with that information, we are able to meet the requirements that will make us more competitive for that grant application I mentioned earlier. As well as extending the deadline for the full, uh, proposal submission.
Okay. So, you see where I was kind of concerned with regards to those that got an advantage by two weeks or so versus those that are, you know, received it two weeks after, and now they're rushing to get this to you by the twelfth?
Right, yeah. And so, we'll, we'll reach out to anyone who's expressed interest, uh, and if there are others that we missed. Uh, I know Greg has been contacted, uh, my colleague Lawrence, who's here as well. He's our point person on our team. So, anybody can reach out to either one of them, and we'll make sure that they are aware of the deadline extension.
Okay. Cause I, I was, I was thinking maybe a, a, a two week, a two weeks, just, just like they were given the, the additional two weeks. I was looking at an October, an October third deadline.
That's, uh, that's something we, we should be able to work with.
Okay, thank you.
Deema, can I ask you a question regarding the September twelfth date? Can you give clarity on the interest? Interest would need to be notified, or would that date be extended?
So, we would, uh, it would be sort of a non-binding request for, for preliminary information, that, that funding request that I was describing earlier. If we extend the deadline, we can't mandate that they require, that they provide, um, their funding request. But we do need that funding request information to be competitive on the grant application. Uh, just a little bit more on that, that's a grant that the city applied for last year, and we just barely missed it, uh, based on the, uh, score that the city achieved. So, we're expecting that this, uh, pipeline of, of, um, development interest will help us to increase our score to, to, um, get the funding from, from the state grant.
But you would like to stick with that September twelfth date, is that correct?
At least for the preliminary information. If, if there's, again, the desire to extend the deadline for, uh, complete applications, we can do that.
So, uh, the grant to the state does not stipulate how many interests is going to be, right? So, you can have a handful of already applicant that have submit, and then basis on those, you can still submit the, the grant to the state, and then we can still receive some other proposal, right? Because the grant to the state doesn't, it's not the pin of who's going to get the bid down the, down the line, down the road.
Does, so the, this is very interesting. So, the scoring criterion that this is related to, it does not, um, mandate who would receive the funding. And what it, uh, is based on is the amount that is requested by developers from the city and a ratio of that amount to the amount that the city is applying for. So, in this case, the city is applying for five million to get the maximum number of points. We're looking to demonstrate that there's at least, uh, an interest or a need from developers of fifteen million dollars.
But they, they don't stipulate to say how many develop that you have to put on that application.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
The RFP's deadline is September twelfth.
At, at the moment, yes, sir.
Can you please describe the, uh, what my councilmember colleague was talking about, people giving, being given an advantage of two weeks or so? Can you please translate that for me, please?
Honestly, I'm not sure exactly. What, what I can provide is the process that we went through, uh, from our perspective. And if, if there's, um, some information that was submitted to the council, uh, in conflict of that, I'm happy to address that. But just really quickly, what we did is we created a list of developers based on a review of several sources that included, uh, a pre-qualified developer list from the state Housing and Community Development Department. That also included a review of, um, the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing Directory. Basically, developers who are listed in that directory who work within the region. Uh, and then also, we looked at, we work with several other public agency clients, and so, we looked at developers who have demonstrated success working with those clients. And so, we created that list of developers, which included more than two hundred fifty contacts, working at over a hundred and ten developers. And out of those, we received expressions of interest from eighteen developers who have, uh, demonstrated track records of securing low-income housing tax credits from the state and other sources of state funding, and who have, uh, excellent track records of, of successful affordable housing development. So, if there were, uh, some developers who are excluded from the list, we're happy to, to do additional follow-up in, in reaching out to, to other developers. Or if there's some who, um, discovered about the RFP but later than it was initially issued, again, we can extend the deadline to give them more time.
How many applicants do you anticipate having a ready, uh, a fully completed application, uh, to be turned in on September twelfth? How many do you anticipate?
So, we don't have a number on that. I'm hoping we'll get close to eighteen, uh, based on those who have expressed interest. I know that, um, some of our team members are in communication with some of these developers for, again, for other projects, other clients. And those, um, developers have brought up this RFP and NOFA in conversations about other projects, um, in other jurisdictions.
Who in the city can, uh, tell, give me, uh, an idea about how many people have?
There, there's no way to give that answer. Deema gave the answer that there was eighteen, uh, inquiries.
Okay.
And at this point, we have eighteen individuals, developers, asking questions. And at that point, we can't assume how many applications we're gonna get to submit it.
Are there applicants, possible applicants, current applicants that have expressed the need, maybe in the desire to see that deadline extended so they can complete their applications?
Yes, that, that wasn't one of the questions that we received during the question and answer timeframe. At least one of the developers expressed interest if there was flexibility with the deadline. At the time, we did not extend the deadline because of our need, uh, again, related to the LHTF grant. But again, we, after, uh, understanding that there's some concern from council about the deadline, we were brainstorming and discussing with staff, what are some solutions, and the one I described is the one we came up with.
So, there might be one that's not ready to submit a complete application?
Potentially. It could also be that they were asking if they could have more time but are working diligently to, to meet the deadline given.
Does extending the deadline to October, does that open this to new applicants that haven't expressed interest that you haven't identified?
Uh, yes, so, even if developers have not previously expressed interest, they would still be eligible to apply. And so, it would just be a matter of, again, if, whoever expresses interest or who has seen the RFP NOFA, they are welcome to submit a proposal.
Perhaps we can accommodate that one developer that's asked for the extension as opposed to extending the deadline?
Just to clarify, are you saying to extend?
I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, because, uh, I mean, everybody else did their work and rushed to be able to complete their applications. They're very conscious of deadlines, you know? Opening them up, I'm just kind of begs more questions, at least for me. That's it.
Through, through the chair. What I would recommend is to proceed with the process because you have to submit that application to the state on, on the seventeenth, correct? Because the state is not going to give you extensions. You have to submit, or you're just out of luck. So, continue with the process because on the twelfth, you might receive potentially eighteen proposals, right? So, proceed with the process and give some other developer that want to submit, that, the two weeks for them to submit or even less, or they, they, because if they want to do something, they could done in twenty-four hours, I tell you the truth. Because they, they, that's their job. So, they would have to put resources to come up with something, uh, to, to deliver to the city. So, continue the process because I don't want us to stop not to be able to apply to the state because that's important, five million dollars, very important. So, we need to do that. So, continue with that basis on what you're going to receive on the twelfth, and then open, give to those other developer that contact you the chance to submit. And because down the road, that is when we're going to decide who's going to be the developer. the road, that is when we're going to decide who's going to be the developer, right? So it's not to say favoritism of somebody or not, but the thing is, right now, we need to move on with the process and just open to the other people that want to submit, give them some time to submit. So that's it. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you for the preliminary. That's important, the funding.
I agree. I agree with Councilmember Montero. Anybody who is interested in a property could assemble an application within one or two days. So the fact that people would need more time probably is not the best outfit to bring into the city to do certain types of developments. And plus, new developers who are applying for this are probably, is probably not an organized professional outfit that we should trust in maybe accepting their applications or even proceeding with them. So I definitely want to know who these individuals are. It's highly suspicious. Let me ask you this. Do we have, is staff making the decision on the choice of the developers for Corderi? Or is this a city council decision?
What we had planned and what we had discussed with Greg McLean was to review the applications that we receive after the twelfth, and then we, depending on what the proposals are for, because it's not just for the development of the Corderi site, it's for affordable housing throughout the city potentially, we would discuss what different sites and different funding requests were received, and then using, our preliminary plan is to work with staff, form a committee, review the proposals, narrow it down to the best qualified and the ones we would recommend, and then I expect it would be presented to council to ultimately to approve.
Is there a grading scale for the applications? Some type of criteria that you're going to use to rank them?
Yes, the RFP does include specific scoring criteria, criteria and different percentages applied to those criteria, and so that's the lens through which we'll be reviewing the applications, and that was in the RFP, so the developers are aware what the criteria are.
Who are the elements of that decision-making grading process? What are, who are the individuals, what departments?
We're working primarily with Greg McLean in community development.
So it's just you and them, him?
We've also communicated with the city manager and with the city attorney and with Kimberly in housing.
I know, but there has to be a panel that's going to sit down and review these. Who are the people that are going to be sitting down and review this?
I understand, thank you. We haven't formed the committee yet.
So I just-
Let me know when you need to form that committee.
Okay.
Yeah, just to get a clarification and direction here, the RFP went out, and it was supposed to be closed by September 12th, 2024. What Dima Galkin has just told you was that because of the deadline with the grant that we're seeking, that he will, he can accept preliminary interest by September 12th, but to extend the closing date for the full RFP to what they do.
October 3rd was suggested?
October 3rd. And that seems to be the consensus of the council to approve.
Yes.
Okay.
And through the chair. Mr. Mayor, I would advise, because later on, all of us is going to vote who the developer's going to be, I would not advise for you to get involved in appointing the committee. Allow the consultant, the staff to form that committee independently from none of us being involved on that.
Oh, I agree with whatever's allowable by law, that we should follow whatever the general law is for these types of situations, nothing else.
Okay.
I agree with Councilman Montero. Council's conflicted out, and when it's time to make a selection, we're going through staff advice, staff recommendation. Look, there's nothing suspicious here, so now let's not go through a theory. It was open to nonprofit organizations, those nonprofits received it, they started it, their RFP. It was brought back to council by Councilwoman Patterson and said, basically, let's open it up to everybody. Everybody didn't have the advance time that the nonprofits had. So that's, that's what it is. It's nothing suspicious, nothing, anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Elected officials report, City Treasurer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I just want to say that, oh, yeah. So the treasury bill that we bought six months ago is going to mature this month, and we will have yielded close, it's over $130,000. We're going to roll it for another six months, and I took this under advisement of our broker at MBS for the input, and from input from the finance manager, that upon the next six months maturity, we'll roll it and convert it into a three-year term. Interest of all holdings will continue to be paid out quarterly. As you all know, I don't know if any of you do know, that the Fed is going to meet this month, and they're going to be discussing, discussing cutting the interest rate. Two percent is currently on the table, but we won't know until they meet, and I will definitely be keeping close watch on that to see how it is going to impact, you know, cities' investments in the future. On a lighter note, the car show was a lot of fun, and it was really neat to see all the cars, and thank you to all the staff who made it such a success as always. I had a great time, so thank you, and that was put on very well by all the staff involved. Thank you.
Ms. City Clerk?
Thanks, everyone, for coming out, especially with the presidential debate on. Just wanted to let you all know that in the lobby, you will see a sheet of paper with our ballot box locations. So anyone interested in that, if you would like to vote early, you are able to cast your vote at one of our ballot boxes, which is the Hawthorne Library, Eucalyptus Park, Memorial Park, Wiseburn Library, and Bodger Park. And I wanted to just address one thing, because I've gotten some calls from people saying that my office is not transparent with respect to candidates for 60s. We can only give the information that's given to us. I know that some people have called the FPPC, and I've gotten calls from the FPPC to address anyone not complying in that way. Just to let everyone know, people who don't comply with the rules, the FPPC manages that, they oversee it, and they do the enforcement. The city clerk's office does not do that. So if anyone, candidates or otherwise, has a question about that, about the process, about the forms that are required for candidates, you can feel free to come by my office, you can inspect the documents that are there already. Everything that's been submitted to us is available to the public. Everyone, have a great night. I want to also just thank staff so much. I don't think I thank you guys enough for everything that you guys do. We were really fabulous. We put on some great things here at Hawthorne, and today was another good example of that at Jim Thorpe Park. I'm really excited to see, see that park come to life and right in between my place and my daughter's place, so we'll be having my granddaughter out there playing baseball real soon. Thank you all so much, and have a great evening.
Ms. City Clerk, could I ask you a question about that?
Yes, yes.
Do you have the 460s online, the most current ones? Or, okay, well, that's a matter of convenience, your obligation is just to make them available, so you're complying, even if you just had paper copies that people could take a look, so.
Oh, and also, one more thing about that.
You're doing good.
I wanted to go back, but just about that as well. We don't, well, now we have worked with IT so that we are able to put them online, but before that, we were not putting them online, we had to wait. So some people called my office and complained that they weren't up fast enough. So we are putting them up as fast as we are getting them in real time now, and again, if you see something or don't see something there, feel free to come by my office and inspect any documents we have there.
Yeah, and in your defense, you have them available in some manner over there. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First want to welcome the community, or thank the community for coming out and participating in this process, especially making this priority over watching the debate this evening. It's good to have you guys, good to see you guys, and appreciate everybody who's kind of voiced their, any concerns or questions that they have. I, you know, myself, just like the rest of my council colleagues, we get a lot of, it's my alarm telling me to stop eating. Myself, as well as my, the rest of my council colleagues, we get a lot of communication from the community about a lot of different concerns that's happening, and we definitely appreciate that. I want to kind of bring up a couple concerns that I've been approached by and want to ask staff, you know, for your support in addressing these. One was, and I've already reached out to the city manager, but I want to, you know, mention it publicly, I had a number of residents reach out to me about some unsavory activity along Birch Avenue and behind the mall, and has been reported that there may be some, some drug activity that might be happening over there, and definitely some unhoused individuals that may be making some people uncomfortable. And so I want to make sure that we are, you know, keeping an eye on that area and making sure we're providing whatever services need to be provided to those that are unhoused, and of course, any law enforcement to those that are not following the law. Also, in Holly Glen on 135th and Isis, there's a intersection that, I understand that there's a request about as far as the crosswalk, how the lights, the signal lights work. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with some intersections where they'll stop all traffic and let the, those who are crossing the street, crossing every single direction at the same time diagonally, as well as along the intersections. And they have requests to, at least during the school year, update those, those signal lights where the children can cross in all areas, all ways at the same time, and had stop all traffic at the same time, and then, of course, let the traffic go, and, you know, where the, those who are crossing the street aren't able to cross at that time. So I think there is some concern about some safety at that intersection. I did attend the Lions ice screening event. I didn't get my eyes checked myself, but I was there to kind of provide some support, and it was such a great event, and there were so many Lions members from other areas there as well in attendance, and we had a great time, a lot of good food, a lot of good fellowship. It was a great organization, obviously, based upon all the volunteerism that that organization inspires. And so I want to thank you, Alaric, for bringing that to our community, and definitely would love to continue to support and encourage those efforts in the city of Hawthorne. Outside of that, it's good to see everybody. Thanks for coming out. I look forward to seeing you guys at the next council meeting, and of course, at all the following community events that we're having.
May I add something to what Councilman Patterson just said? When there is, for any residents here in the city of Hawthorne, if you see any activity, criminal activity, things of, that you have, are observing, aside from calling the police department, also contact the city attorney's office, because we are gathering all these activities that are taking place around the empty mall. Thank you.
Councilwoman English?
Thank you, City Attorney. I didn't know that. I have something for you to look at. I'll send that to you this evening. We need to ask the owner of the mall to secure the open fence that is broken, and bikes are riding into that open space and going behind the railroad, the building, to do their dirty work, whatever that may be. But I see it on a regular. I live behind the mall myself, so, yeah. Thank you to our, our staff, most importantly, Republic Services, for coming out and speaking on the processes in which they are working to address a number of issues in the city of Hawthorne, including the bulky items and things alike, including, from what I understand, collection of bulky items and some other, let's see, even how to order a large bin. I don't know when the next bulky item collection or whatnot is, but I look forward to that, because there's a lot of folks that want to get rid of their goods. Let's see, IT Services, Josh, thank you so much for your information. I think that's the first time we've had in history IT report out to the council. I'd like that, and I'd like to see that on a regular. I look forward to the wordly bilingual translation. I think that's way overdue, especially for more community engagement and participation in our civil activity, and so I look forward to folks being able to come to city council and be able to speak in their tongue and be heard. I also want to thank Alaric, thank you so much. Fifty-nine patients, that's a good number of patients to come out for services, and all the things that you made mention, from, you know, needing surgery to finding other things, and unless you had that type of open and free service, otherwise, they probably wouldn't have gone, right? But that's a good number. Thank you for doing that. I know your, your hard work is paying off, and your lovely mother working with you alongside is also so sweet. Thank you for doing that for our constituents here in our city of Hawthorne. There was made mention of our cannabis grand opening. I don't know who attended, but a lot of us attended. It was a great event, a great opening. It's called artistry for a reason. It's artists who are making murals and paintings and selling it from the business. So if you're into art, if you're into the arts, if you're into murals, if you're into any of that, they have paintings for sale. I know I'm going to be inquiring. I took a look, and I liked what I saw. I love the fact that it's artists in a space, painting and providing that. And for just clarification, again, the voters voted for it. It was 60% approved. So if you didn't vote for it, that's great, you didn't vote, but 60%, and it passed, and here we are today. I also want to make mention of the Beach Boy. I went by there the other day, and I did take a picture of the Beach Boy, and, you know, I was really sad to hear that they tried to break into it and take out some, they tried, that's what I heard, they tried. I hope there's cameras over there to monitor that, because we've had some other plaques and things removed from city buildings, and so I was really hurt to hear that. And it looks like you, $4,000 maintenance, that's, that's, that's an expense every month or every year, or how does that, monthly? Okay. What else? The car show, great success. Thank you to all staff. I mean, we're still hearing about it today. What a great event it's been. I know Councilman Montero and I spoke about it maybe being 10 to 13 years that there was a car show. Look forward to entertaining a potential toy drive and another, another car show along the boulevard, and I'll work collectively with the city manager and our police on that. I want to also, I missed the Dodgers field opening. I wish I'd known that. I don't know what happened, but I heard that was a great event that took place today at 10 o'clock this morning. The kids are going to love that, and, you know, go Dodgers. Everybody's a Dodger fan here in LA, and I can't say enough. I want to just give a direct again with regards to implementing policy around the elections here in the city of Hawthorne. Anything and everything that I made mention earlier, if you could please implement, if there's additional items that I missed, I'll be more than happy to meet with you to discuss those. And I also want to look at surrounding cities and communities that have their own policy with regards to elections, and I want to implement the requirement for the code of fair political practices, and I want to include anything else that I made mention. There's something else I'm missing there, but there's a 90-day rule, from what I understand. Signs go up, signs go down after 90 days. There's a fee if they continue to stay up, and I want to also make a fee, an additional fee, with regards to anyone destroying property. So with that, thank you again, Republic Services, IT Services. Thank you, city staff, for the car show. Thank you for the Dodgers. Thank you for the report on the airport, on the airplane that went down here across the street from our city hall. I only had one constituent call me about it, and it was a midnight, it was midnight, right? So it was probably the next morning that I got that, right? You know, we, we have an airport that's 24 hours, and it's crucial for services, and we realize that. Katrina and I sit on the LAX Advisory Board, you know, we address the issues regarding noise and whatnot, and, and we understand how community, you know, could be concerned about noise, but at the end of the day, LAX is a huge animal, and they know that it's there, right? And they know, based off of where they've lived for years, how that affects you or not. But again, I hope the two individuals are okay. Thank you, Department of Public Works, and those that assisted in getting that cleaned up. that assisted in getting that cleaned up. And, um, it's, it's, it's concerning. This is not one airplane. I think you had one too over at your, your, your location, right? That was a couple of years ago, a few years ago. But, uh, we work really hard, um, to address that. Uh, and I look forward to all these other events that are coming up. I, there's a lot of flyers, you guys. I, I'm going to go them, you know, the senior center groundbreaking, uh, Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, the end of summer barbecue, eleven-thirty to one-thirty for city staff, uh, collection day, October twelfth, nine to, nine to one. I think I just answered collection day, Betty, Betty Insworth. There it is, collection day. Uh, the senior, uh, senior citizen resource fair, October twenty-second. We have our emergency preparedness cert program, October twenty-sixth, uh, Saturday, September, uh, November second and Saturday, November ninth. That's in, uh, nine to five. That's eight hours training, three days, uh, to get certified to be a cert member. Um, and then we have our Halloween spectacular carnival that's coming up, uh, October twenty-sixth. No, I don't celebrate Hocktober, so don't tell me to come. But, uh, let's see, nine eleven is tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. I hope a lot of you could come and, uh, participate in that. And, um, to Harrison Associates, thank you for reporting out to us with regards to our, uh, RFP on Corderi. Uh, more housing is what we need and, uh, especially mixed use and any housing that we can meet arena numbers for. Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Thank you for listening at home. Um, I have to start with the, uh, the Dodgers Foundation event this morning, uh, with, uh, I'm going to say his name wrong, Kershaw?
Yeah.
Yeah. He was there. I was sitting next to him.
Oh, wow.
I felt like I was a twelve-year-old kid, you know, like, big star of the Dodgers right there. Um, but, uh, I have to say thank you to Vaughn, to Kiwanah, to the Park and Rex, to the Public Works, to all the department that put that thing together in collaboration with the Dodgers Foundation, uh, Nicole, you know, the Dodger Foundation Executive Director was there, um, the media, you know, came out of the woodwork. They were all there. Um, and, uh, to, just to hear Kershaw talking about the importance of, of the Dodgers Foundation to build these, uh, two fields, uh, in Hawthorne. They call number sixty-four and sixty-five that's going to be right there at the Jim Thorpe, you know, the dream fields, uh, the Jim Thorpe Park. So we cannot wait until January when we actually going to do the, uh, the grand open of those fields, uh, because it's going to be a great opportunity for kids, you know, to get not just involved in sport, but a safe haven for them, a place where they can go there and practice and play. And also the little league's going to be very excited. So, um, I have to say, you know, thank you. Thank you again for the staff because, uh, without your connection, without your leadership, you know, we would not have these partnerships. So the, so it is a great thing for our community. So it shows that, um, Hawthorne, you know, we're going on the right track, uh, in a lot of things. Um, and that is where we listen to the citizens, like, um, they have some, there were some complaints about the Republic Service. So we brought the Republic Service to address the issue. And I have to remind people, you don't need to put those bulk item on the streets. You can call. You have twenty bulk item pickups a year. Before I, I was elected, it was only three a year. And I beg Republic and negotiate with my colleagues and the Republic to get twenty pickup of those bulk item, the couches, the mattress. You don't need to put them on the street. Just call that one-eight-hundred number and they will instruct you how to put them on the street and they'll come and pick it up the next day. And I, you know, and, and it's, it's a mind bargain. The same thing as that food recycle, SB thirteen-eighty-three. I have to tell you, some, even some homeowners in my complex, they go and put trash inside of these, those green bins instead of food recycling. And it's a shame. It's a shame because we have done so much education. We have sent so much flyers out. We have sent pub, no, PR, public relations. We put it on our cables. And believe it or not, down the road is going to cost the city more money if you continue to put trash on those green bins because they're going to penalize cities. Because that's the state mandate it sets. If the cities don't start to make those recycling correctly, they're going to penalize us. So, so please, please help us maintain this planet green, okay? So recycle, recycle right, okay? Um, I have to say thank you, Josh, for this IT, uh, because I know your department has grown tremendously and it's, and we see the fruit of it. It has benefited all the departments and to keep us, uh, all these, uh, technology and cybersecurity and all those good things that you guys are, are using there, also working with our nine-one-one system, the RCC there. So it's fantastic to see all coming together as one. Again, partnership, collaboration, uh, working with, with some other cities. So it's fantastic to see how we're doing, uh, great things. Um, I have to commend the staff again because Vaughn, uh, I don't know, who's your committee who put this, uh, Hawthorne City View together? Eric?
Eric Chavez.
Eric Chavez. This is beautiful, okay? And, and, and I would love for the people to see this, uh, because go to our website, right? You can find on our website. Go to our website and just, and go through this because it is a beautiful newsletter that tells you what the city have done for this past, for, you know, in, in August and the beginning of September. It's, it's here and you can see even the state of the city from the mayor in the front, right? But then you see all the events that the community service department and the public work and all the department have put together. Even Alaric, your vision screen is right here too, okay? So, but it is a well-done newsletter and I think, you know, if I would have the money, I would send to ninety thousand people in the city of Hawthorne. Okay? But I know it costs a lot of money to send it out. So go on our website, please.
If I can add to that, uh, there's a QR code there on the back.
Yes.
You can scan to subscribe and you'll get it every month.
Yeah, see, uh, there is a QR code. You can subscribe and you'll get this every month via email. Okay? So go, 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 go. Also, um, unfortunately, a lot of things is going to be happen, uh, between, um, the eighteen of September to twenty-fourth of September, like the grand, the, the groundbreaking for the senior center on the twenty-fourth, uh, the Hawthorne Police Department having a meeting greet at the Connecticut Credit Union on the twenty-fourth. Uh, unfortunately, I'm not going to be here. Even I'm going to be missing our next meeting, uh, Mr. Mayor, the council meeting on the twenty-fourth. Uh, I have some family issues that I have to be taking care of. So I have to be going to Florida for a whole week from the eighteen to the twenty-sixth. Okay? So I'll be out of town at that time. But put on your calendar, the Hawthorne Presidents Council is going to have the forty-second annual community dinner, uh, on October seventeen at five o'clock. So we're going to have the spaghetti dinner that we're going to raise money for holiday assistance program that we give, uh, Thanksgiving and Christmas, uh, gift card to the needy families from the Hawthorne School District primarily. So all the, all the families, the needy families come from, refer from the Hawthorne School District, all the eleven schools, uh, will receive gift cards. So put on your calendar. The other thing that I want to invite everyone, you know, the Hawthorne Moose Lodge on the, on September twenty-eighth, uh, we're going to celebrate the sixty anniversary of the Hawthorne Moose Lodge, sixty years. And you know, the Hawthorne Moose Lodge, a lot of people might think that it's a place to just go and have some cool drinks and, and some dancing, but the Hawthorne Moose Lodge, the Moose International mission is to raise orphaned childrens and take care of the seniors. So in southeast of Chicago, we have this forty acres campus that we raise orphaned children from zero until they go to college. So all the proceeds from the Moose Lodge, every month we send money to the Moose Charity for that cause. And in Jacksonville, Florida, there is a five-star resource that for seniors. They go there, they have housing, they have medical service, they have, you know, they live in a hotel, basically. But because the Moose philosophy in the, in the nature never abandon the young or the old, they keep together. So that is what the Moose Lodge philosophy is all about. So on September twenty-eighth at six PM, we're going to celebrate sixth anniversary of the Hawthorne Moose Lodge. We're going to have dinner. It's a prime rib or pasta salmon, uh, and then at eight o'clock, it's going to be a casino night. And then at eleven, we'll be dancing until two AM in the morning. It will only cost you forty-dollar donation for the dinner. For the casino night, you'll have five hundred play money and then you'll have some cheap drinks at the Moose and you will have some fun with us. So on that note, thank you again, the staff, because you guys, like I always say, we, you're the pillar of this district. Without you, the council here cannot shine. So thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, council member.
All right, let's take a look. Um, I also agree, the car show was a great event. It was good seeing the car. Uh, we, it was Commissioner Balboa, I think your daughter brought her car too. So that was good to see that, uh, everybody, everybody participated, not just professional car shows, but residents from the city of Hawthorne. Another commissioner brought his Barracuda, I believe it was.
Don Harris.
Don Harris, right? Yeah, he brought his Barracuda. And then there was other members, members of the community that brought their vehicles as well. So that was really, uh, neat to see. Uh, I was, uh, running, uh, I was doing a little bit of exercise around the, uh, track over there at the Eucalyptus Park and it was so interesting to see the ballot boxes right there near the, uh, right next to the entrance to the skate park. So I'm like, okay, well, that's good. We're going to be reaching out and reminding the young voters to vote because sometimes they don't come out to vote as much as they should. So I think it was a good strategic choice to have it there as well. Um, and then we have the other ones over there in Padre Park, at the library over there in Wiseburn, down on one thirty-fifth, the Memorial Park, um, you know, the ones that we, that come out, where, when you come out of the Betty Insworth Center. So at the Hawthorne Library, the traditional locations where we've had them. So that's good. Um, Mr. City Clerk, a quick question. Do we still have a, uh, in-person voting location?
That will be at the Memorial Center.
Okay. And do they have the early voting where you can come in seven days ahead of time? Or do you know what that schedule is? I'm just curious.
You know what? Kiwanah actually handled that. So I'm not really sure about, I believe that there is early voting there. I'm almost positive of it.
Yeah, like, you know how like they've done it like even two weeks before or something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure of it. I believe it's
Do you know what it is?
October third or so.
Yeah, so we, there is early voting and, um, I just shared the dates with Vaughn. Do you have those in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Not super critical.
I have, um, their early voting is October twenty-sixth through November fourth, nine AM to eight PM. And then of course, voting on election day, November fifth, six AM to ten PM.
Is it every single day since, uh, from then on?
October twenty-sixth through November fourth, every day.
Yeah, so it's every day.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Patterson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's going to be the Venus Room, uh, at the Memorial Center.
So we have early voting period, October twenty-sixth to November fourth, from nine AM to eight PM.
Thank you, guys.
And another I can add to that, on election day, six AM to ten PM. Six AM, six AM to ten PM on election day.
So, uh, for all those people that are looking to get out of work early and all this stuff, there's, there's, you, 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 man, it's going to be hard to fool your bosses that you really need to get out early because there's no opportunity to vote. Okay? All right, let me continue with my stuff right here. Thank you, guys. All right, just, just a little bit of, all right, thank you, guys. Definitely, absolutely. Um, residents are encouraged to come and speak their mind, express themselves to the city council. There's a lot of latitude when expressing yourselves. So, you know, if you have something to say to anybody, anybody up here or including myself, I mean, hey, I'll listen. It's up to you the way you want to sound in public, but if you want to say whatever you want to say, go ahead and say it. Uh, and over here, we should be able to handle whatever comes at us up here. That's what we got elected for, for criticism. Um, but the, you can't complain about things after the fact. There's always ample opportunity and we can't have voter apathy, uh, and apathy related to, uh, being involved in the city and looking at our agendas and staying informed. Okay? It's, uh, the onus is on the residents. We do what we have to do to get the information out there, but the onus is on the residents to be able to seek that information out. So just as a clarifying, uh, point. So thank you. Let's rock that off. Um, leaf blowers, um, this got brought up to me recently and, is it one or two people that I've mentioned it to? Just one person. But I'm still interested. Who knows? There might be other people that might have that same issue. I'm not saying that we need to do anything about it. Well, it's probably the same person that's emailed all of us. So, um, as, just to put this to rest, if the city, uh, attorney, this is direct, one of my directors for this meeting is just to determine, is there a ban on gas pow, on, on gas blowers? Do they need to be electrical or like battery charged? I mean, where are we at with, with regards to that? As a report, like a small report.
I don't know offhand. I, I don't know what, there's a state law or whether we have an ordinance on that, but I, I'll check and come back to it.
Yeah, because the thing is, if it's just one person mentioning this and so we're going to do all this other stuff that's going to impact the way our, um, you know, our gardeners and those people, landscapers do business here, uh, I just want to have teeth to be able to make a decision. And if it's something that staff and, uh, determines that it's not called for, then you guys need to let us know as well. Okay? Does that sound fair? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, yes.
Hey, guys, this one's very important for me. I work in a jail. I work at the LA County Jail, teaching inmates math and science. So I'm there all the time and, you know, I hear what the things, the types of comments that go back and forth amongst the inmates. And it's a, it's a celebratory type of atmosphere there where there's, uh, wins that they declare. You know, I'm there to help them, but the reality is there's, I hear this stuff. There's wins. It's, oh, I got away with this. I got away with that. I got away with this. Ah, I'll be out of here in no time. You know, this is not going to stick. You know, they, they have a preferred, uh, district attorney that they want, but, uh, yeah, mostly it's Proposition forty-seven that did a lot of damage and gave people a lot of, uh, you know, just a lot of wings to be able to do things that they're not supposed to. So, um, Proposition thirty-six, I'm going to ask the city attorney to please bring back Proposition thirty-six, uh, support of that as a council, as a resolution, and then it could be debated and people have opinions, we could debate it then. But the main components of that are that it will allow felony charges, uh, for possessing drugs, fentanyl, and for thefts under nine hundred and fifty dollars. Everybody's complaining about, why can't we do anything at the target? Why is everything in a glass case? You know, you know, certain cities don't have it. Well, we do because there's a bit of crime that happens in some of our locations. And that's because you, people only get a little, they don't even get a slap on the hand sometimes. And then there's not enough, uh, juice in our laws to be able to go after them and punish them. So what this does is with two prior, uh, drug or two prior theft convictions that would be counted as misdemeanors, right? Two prior thefts or drug conviction, evictions as misdemeanors, the third, uh, the third count, if this happens a third time, will be counted as a felony. It's still a little bit generous. I wish it would, would return to what it used to be, but that's still giving people like one, two chances to correct their ways and not be caught up in a felony. Okay? Defendants, oh, here, here's another component of that. Defendants who plead guilty to felony drug conviction, uh, drug possession and complete treatment can have their charges dismissed. So that's also a good thing too. And then this would increase the sentences for other specified drug and theft crimes. Um, an argument here for Proposition thirty-six says that if you increase, if you increase the prison sentences, that it may reduce savings, uh, savings that currently fund mental health and drug, uh, treatment programs. that it may reduce savings that currently fund mental health and drug treatment programs. Or that'll help in the mental health, our mental health treatment and drug treatment programs. So I think we need to tighten up when it comes to this stuff. And we just need to be able to respond. And we've all talked about being a little bit heavier-handed on stuff. So for discussion when we come back, all right? I think that possibly could be something we all agree. Right? So that's my second directive right there. Oh, no, thank you for mentioning that. As a resolution, which would be a letter? And whoever doesn't want to support it could opt out of signing that. But at least as a group, we could talk about as a resolution. We always respect anybody who wants to opt out of a letter signing. It's happened before, but it'd be good to be all on the same page to support our public safety, right?
So if we do a resolution, then we could just send in the resolution instead of doing a letter?
Okay, if that's, I'm sorry. I just thought people always used to bring up letters, write a letter.
You could do letters or a resolution.
A resolution would probably stand for itself.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know what we normally do, but whatever we typically do in these in supporting our opposing a bill.
Mr. City Attorney, right? Just a resolution would be sufficient.
This is a proposition. And so if you want to do a letter, it's fine if you, I don't know what to do.
What would be stronger on behalf of the city? A resolution?
A resolution would be stronger position.
It's going to be on the ballot or it's going to be in the legislative?
Proposition 36 is going to, it's a proposition. It's going to be on the ballot. Yes, sir.
Oh, it's going to be on the ballot?
Yes.
So it's to repeal that one that was...
It doesn't repeal it, it just adjusts certain things in it. Nothing repeals. If you repeal, you go back to exactly...
Yeah, you would go back to exactly what we used to have before.
And that's not what our legislators are looking for.
If it's on the ballot, I don't think we, we just need to have a position to say, to help people vote on the DAF and all that.
Well, you could do a resolution or a letter, either one as a city.
My directive is for a resolution. And that's just, let's just, okay? Thank you, guys, for your feedback on that. So tomorrow, we're going to have the 9/11 memorial ceremony. And it's going to start at 8:30 in the morning. So everybody's welcome to join us right here in front of City Hall. And there were over between 3,000 and 4,000 people who passed away in the three locations at the, you know, the first Trade Center, the World Trade Center building that got hit. And the second one, the Pentagon, and the one that fell in the field in Pennsylvania. One of my classmates from high school that was in my class of '89 passed away in the plane that fell in Pennsylvania. So somebody I used to pass by and, you know, have, share a locker, a couple, two or three lockers away from me in high school at Bishop Montgomery. So, hey, those things happen. There's bad people out there and there's still bad people out there. So we still need to remain vigilant and support our military personnel, our federal government to protect us, our local law enforcement, our, you know, first responders. And one thing that I think doesn't get mentioned a lot is that we should be praying and thinking about the relatives of those people who passed away. Because they're suffering up to this day. So that's something that kind of gets neglected in the process. You know, we are thinking about everybody else, but those people who keep suffering, those who don't have their relatives, their parents, you know, their brother, sister, their kids, because they passed away or they were killed. So if we could have a moment of silence before we adjourn the meeting in the memory of all those victims. All right, folks. And can you also pray for?
I had a cousin that just passed away last week. He was working out at the gym and he collapsed and died.
Can we have his name so we can pray for him?
Beau Ricks, a resident in the city of Inglewood and a professor at Northridge College.
If we can have a moment of silence for him too. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we're still thinking about you, Commissioner Balboa and your family for your recent loss. All right, guys, I think 8:37. Is the presidential debate finished?
Yeah.
Okay, it's time to go watch that or just read the summaries, right? All right. This meeting is adjourned at 8:37.